Just doing everything. So I had to go into my email, find an email from Stephanie.
Regular scheduled board meeting today, May 7th, 2024. We will begin our meeting with an invocation. We ask Pastor Leonard Himes to come up and then to also lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you could stand.
Well, good morning. Our Father, we come to thee on this another day you've given us. Lord, we invoke and ask that you meet with us in this meeting. Lord, all those that labor in this building, piecing the puzzle together for operation, I pray you'd bless them. Our public safety and preservation of life and property and the well-being of our citizens. Lord, we ask for your hand to be upon them. And yet today, God, we need you in here with us. The things to be discussed, the business that needs to be accomplished, that you'd lead, guide, and direct, and we'd have your presence in this place. So bless this day, this meeting, and this time in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to officially call our board meeting to order. I do have a couple amendments to the agenda. Amending ordinance 2002 Hotel Motel Tax Resolution for the purposes of the Board on April 23rd to change the effective date to July 1. County manager, do you want to come and talk to us about that resolution? The hotel motel that we approved at last meeting, some dates need to be changed just to perfect the record.
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board. At the last board meeting, you all did authorize staff to proceed with amending the hotel motel tax. At that time, we did fail to speak with the Tax Commissioner because that is actually who is in charge with imposing that additional tax. And after meeting with Tax Commissioner Harris, he needs at least 60 days to notify the business owners of the change, but also to upgrade his software so that it can now collect the increase amount. And so we're just asking the Board to change the effective date. It would have been effective during that meeting immediately, but we're asking to change it to July 1st, and he feels confident that he'll be ready to go with proper notice provided to all of the businesses who will be impacted by that increase. So this is just a resolution to amend the effective date.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve? Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The other amendment to the agenda is that we will be adding executive session for personnel matters and litigation. Next item is our proclamations and recognition. If we could have our public relations specialist Nicholas Ivy to please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners. First, I have a certificate of recognition, in recognition of Rusty Strong, and it reads, "The Henry County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes and commands lifelong resident Rusty Strong for his amazing accomplishments as an amateur golfer. Strong is the CEO of Strong &amp; Company Insurance, and under his leadership has grown the family business exponentially and recently celebrated 50 years in business. As a successful businessman and a dedicated family man, he has also managed to make his name for himself in the world of golf. Strong has earned many awards and accolades as a golfer, as he's a three-time Society of Seniors Player of the Year, two-time Golf Week Senior Player of the Year, and the 2022AmateurGolf.com Senior Player of the Year. Having a passion and talent for the game since childhood, Strong has went on to a successful career, and after raising his family, honed his golf skills to become one of the best senior amateur golfers on the circuit. The Henry County Board of Commissioners congratulates you for your many successes and wishes you the best in your future endeavors." Do we have Mr. Strong?
I'm here.
Yes.
So, those that know me well, know my passion and love for golf. I've been very blessed to have Rusty in my life for, gosh, ever since I was a little kid. I didn't really prepare this, y'all. With that being said, Rusty was my Sunday school teacher, taught me his love of golf, and shared that with me as I caddied for him for many years on the bag. He's done the same for me. It's great to have such a wonderful friend. But what I'll tell you is, his accomplishments, to have someone here in the United States with the tournaments that he has won over the past few years would be awesome. To have him in the state of Georgia with what he has accomplished would be awesome. But we have him here in Henry County and in McDonough, and that is an honor for us, and it's a dedication to his hard work for those that play golf. No, it is a daily dedication. And he's been able to do that while also running his business and keeping in touch with friends and family, even when he's been on the road. So thank you for what you've done, not only for the state of Georgia, but for Henry County and for me as a good friend of yours. Thank you, Rusty.
All right. Next, I have a proclamation in recognition of National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024. And it reads, "Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas personnel from Henry County Emergency Services and other first responders throughout the county, state, and nation stand ready to provide compassionate, life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care drastically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the EMS team, both career and volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas this is the 50th Annual Celebration of EMS Week, where we can honor our frontline heroes dedicated to providing emergency medicine that saves so many lives every day, and this year's theme is honoring our past, forging our future, is so particularly meaningful as it reminds our nation that EMS professionals are faced with so many challenges today, and they still rise above them. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the week of May 19th through the 20, May 25th, 2024, as EMS Week in Henry County with the theme honoring our past, forging our future. And thanks to the Henry County EMS team for their service to Henry County residents, and encourage all residents to join in recognition of the brave men and women who serve every day." And Commissioners, I have one last proclamation for you, but this one I'm just gonna read. And it's a proclamation in recognition of May is Mental Health Awareness Month. It reads, "Whereas May is Mental Health Month, and whereas mental health is an essential part of overall well-being impacting individuals, families, and communities across Henry County and beyond, and whereas one in five American adults experience a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help. And whereas early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving the quality of life. And whereas May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. And whereas with the early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Henry County, and encourage all citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible service to all people with mental health conditions." Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ACCG 2024 Recognition Awards. Melissa?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm proud to be for you today to announce several awards that the county won at the ACCG's annual conference held in Savannah, Georgia, last month, late last month. The first award that was, that the county was honored with is a County of Excellence Award. Six counties every year chosen out of 159 counties for an innovative program or plan that showcases the county and other counties can replicate. So this year, Henry County was awarded the County of Excellence Award by ACCG and Georgia Trend for their Behavioral Health Initiative with the Henry County Police Department. The Henry County Police Department has constantly built on a behavioral initiative which includes certain training, it includes peer counseling, it includes a clinician, in-clinician, in-house clinician, and also service dog program. And I'd like to bring up Director Mark Amerman to just give a little bit of an overview of the plan because it really is something special, and it was highly regarded at the ACCG.
Well, thanks, Melissa. You told me that you were gonna handle this. I guess in summary, what I'm most proud of, that we saw an issue probably 10 years ago. Unfortunately, it was after several tragic events that the PD saw. And we looked within ourselves and thought what we could do before mental health really came on the forefront as being a need. So we're probably talking about a decade ago. And we started with peer counseling. You know, that led into CIT training, mental health training, getting our officers trained, getting them the ability to recognize people when they're in crisis. Back when I started 37 years ago, we saw someone acting how they shouldn't be acting, we just took them to jail. And that's not the answer for society. We also looked internally, doing it, a well-prepared and a healthy police officer is more apt to treat the citizens they serve in that same manner. And that's what we've done. And we've grown the program. And once we started, it just continued. Dog program? I didn't come up with that. That was internally, the guys came up with that. They brought it to me. I was like, hey, that's a really great idea. We need to do that. So truly, I commend everybody in PD that started this. And it started with just us noticing there was an issue, and it's grown that a program we see today, that Melissa was actually able to articulate a lot better than I can, that made us win an award. So really, it's hats off to Henry County for recognizing it, making the program grow, and just continues to grow.
So we'd like to get a picture with the Board and all of our peer counselors and public safety who are involved in the Behavioral Health Initiative, and they're here with us today, if that's okay. To get your pictures? I just want to give a little shout out to the officers with the service animals. They take on the care themselves of the dogs, and also Tales of Hope train them. And it's a great organization for service and therapy dogs. You're gonna have to get up again. But so, the next award I want to announce is sincerely something I'm very proud of because I've worked for this woman for 15 years. The ACCG Leadership Award, called the Jerry R. Griffin Excellence in Public Service Award, was given to County Manager Sherry Hobson Matthews at the conference. One person out of 159 counties and how many nominations is honored with this award in a year, and she was this year's recipient. It's the highest honor given to an elected or appointed county official or an individual who's made significant contributions through public service and local government and other involvement within the community and/or state level. Ms. Matthews' reputation precedes her, well-known in the county and the state as a servant leader who is ready to accept any challenge in making Henry County the very best it can be in service to the public. So it was a big award for her. We're very proud of her, and I'd like for her to come up and get a picture with her Board. Okay, the last one for me. You'll have to get back up again. I guess we saved the best for last. This year, at that conference, our Chair, Carlotta Harrell, was awarded with the 2024 Legislative Advocate of the Year Award for her advocacy and work at the Capitol on behalf of Henry County. The ACCG Awards and Recognition Program annually celebrates county leaders. This is coming from Executive Director Dave Wills. The Legislative Advocate of the Year recognizes individuals who consistently engage in ACCG's policymaking process, demonstrating unwavering dedication to advancing Georgia's counties, and that was exemplified by Chairwoman Carlotta Harrell this year. Congratulations to Chair Harrell. I can tell you this, for the last 10 years, I have been in on Friday morning meetings with ACC staff to get updates on policies. And Chair Harrell is the first chair that would pop up in these meetings online. We started seeing her, so I told my staff, make sure you're on time, getting that meeting on time, so she knows you're there. But she has been very active, not only online meetings, but at the Capitol, really wearing them out, and she's done great work on behalf of the county in that policy and advocacy. So I would like to get a picture of Chair Harrell with her Board.
Next, we'll have appointments. Henry County Veterans Advisory Board Appointment. Next we'll have appointments, Henry County Veterans Advisory Board appointments. I'm just going to go down the line and ask each Commissioner to identify who their appointment is.
I don't have one yet, ma'am.
You don't have one yet, okay. District two.
I have, I don't know, she's here, Pastor Sanders.
Okay.
Who is my appointment for District two. She's a veteran and she's well-known and does a lot of community service here in Henry County.
Okay.
District three, Dwight Lewis.
Okay, District four.
District four, Alicia McCray.
Okay, and District five.
District five, now please stand, Mr. Michael Oldsby, veteran of the US Marine Corps. Thank you, sir.
And my appointment to the board is Denise Gaines, and I still have one additional appointment to make. So can I get a motion for us to approve the current appointments that we have?
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Appointments will take effect immediately and will serve until the District Commissioner terms ends. Next item we'll have on the agenda is the consent, is the consent agenda is, we'll have our County Manager, Sherry Matthews, to come forward, please.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board, this is your consent agenda for Tuesday, May seventh at nine AM. Under the courts, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting an emergency grant from the Council of Accountability Courts and the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council in the amount of one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars with no increase in match required for the, for the Henry County Veterans Treatment Court to fully cover important drug screens for the remainder of the fiscal year 2024. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding bid number twenty-four dash three-six for sidewalk trip hazard mitigation and ADA compliance as an annual contract to Georgia Safe Sidewalks LLC. The expected cost of this service per year is approximately ninety thousand dollars, and funds are available in the DOT budget. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding Sourcewell Contract Holder, contract number zero-three-two-one-one-nine dash JDC to ag pro companies for the purchase of a tractor with a boom in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents, and purchase of two tractors for Henry County DOT roadside mowing in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents using funds from FY 2024 Henry County DOT capital equipment budget. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the disposal of surplus vehicles and equipment listed on Attachment A and Attachment B. These items are no longer, or no longer maintain a serviceable function to the county. Under Fire Rescue, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding an annual contract, RFP number twenty-four dash three-five to Emergency Billing LLC for EMS transport billing services. This will be a one-year contract with two mutually agreed upon annual renewals. Under SPOS, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a change order in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and a budget amendment in the amount of ninety thousand for additional construction-related costs incurred on the Iris Lake Road at Racetrack Road intersection improvement, which is a shared project between District one and District three Transportation Improvement Project. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Cost for McDonough Parkway Extension in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. The total cost of the project is estimated at twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. McDonough Parkway Extension is a T-SPOS District three Improvement Project. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Cost for Flipping Road Extension in the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. The total cost for the Henry County Water Authority relocation is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Flipping Road Extension is a SPOS five District three Improvement Project. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions, or with regards to the consent agenda? Commissioner Angler?
On SPOS item C, there's a discrepancy between the agenda and the provided documentation on which district it should be. Just want to make sure that's corrected.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was the original district when it was first.
Good morning, Board members. It is, as you mentioned, Commissioner Lewis, it is the original district. It's actually now five and one. But under the original SPOS five, it was District three. So we kept, we can't be changing in the middle of a.
I understand that. I thought that was Original District two. I did too, but.
It was, would have been Original District five at the time.
Originally it was one and three. Now it's going to be, the new lines are one and five for that area, at that intersection.
What's, what's the question, Commissioner?
The flipping road extension, it says in SPOS five District three Improvement Project, where you read at the bottom.
Yes, so the agenda is not correct. It should be District two. So it'll be the old two, new five. Yes, thank you, thank you. It's the agenda that's incorrect. Yes, I apologize. Thank you.
Other than that, good? Okay.
I move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Did I miss a resolution for Mayor Price? Is that something?
It's going to be prepared, we will see it in the next one.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, okay. Next item on the agenda is Applying and Zoning ULDC Amendment twenty-four dash zero-one. Kenta? Is that it? Did I, did I miss something else?
You skipped the resolution approving facility and road naming, the policy?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, wait a minute, Kenta, okay, all right, I'm sorry, County Manager, go ahead.
So, good morning again. Before you this morning is a resolution approving a facility and road naming policy for the county. As many of you all are probably aware, the county currently does not have a policy as it pertains to not only our county facilities, but how we name roads. And over the course of the last couple of years, and most recently, we've received requests from citizens, from our elected officials in terms of naming roads and naming buildings. And so we've done some research within other communities and would like to present to you all a policy for consideration for honoring, naming and honorary renaming of roads, structures and facilities within the county. As I mentioned, the purpose is to establish a criteria for naming county-owned buildings, fixtures, lands, roads and bridges. As part of the naming process, there are multiple departments, and most importantly, the Board of Commissioners has the final say on the approval process. And so as you'll see on the screen, we do have approvals that will be required from our public safety team, our building department, our planning and zoning, our Department of Transportation, the County Manager's Office, our county clerk and the Board of Commissioners. You all should have in front of you an attachment which actually outlines the process and why those many departments are included in the process because it will require multiple steps to get to that final approval. I have pulled out some of the proposed requirements, but this is not all. So, for example, one of the following elements that's proposed for requirements for an honoree is that the individual has to be a resident or property owner for at least ten years and/or a graduate of Henry County Public or Private School. Because we do have requests where we are honoring graduates, and most graduates that may have graduated from high school may not be an owner of property within Henry County. Also, the honoree has to be a notable historical, or have a notable historical association within the area or nature of the facility. We want to make sure that we are recognizing honorees that are notable within that area which we are looking to rename or looking to honor. We would like for one of the requirements to be a community leader, and then we also include it deceased for at least two years preceding the date of the application. The proposed criteria is the individual seeking to have the honorary marker placed must submit an application to the county clerk's office, and the application must be submitted at least sixty days prior to the board meeting. The first publication has to go into the legal organ within fifteen days prior to the public hearing, and then any costs associated with the honorary marking will require board approval, and then that will be passed on to the individual who's seeking to have the honorary marking. What this policy does not do is change road names because most of our road names are created at the time that an application comes in for development or when a final plat is submitted. And so these are simply honorary markings that will be located along roadways for roadway requests, and then for buildings, if there is any type of honorary marking for those buildings, they will be placed on the building. What we're seeking not to do is to create any undue hardship to property owners, businesses, residences, where we're going in and renaming roads. And so if it is an existing roadway, this policy does not seek to rename roads, only to place an honorary marking. At this time, I will pause for any questions that the board may have.
Yes, it was something in the resolution I thought that said that for anything to be approved, it had to be unanimous in the renaming of, is it buildings and roads?
Yes, ma'am. It requires, or we indicated in the policy, that it would require a unanimous vote from the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so I'm asking for that to be changed to the majority because our legislation, according to our charter, says it takes four votes for anything to a pass. I don't want to put constraints where it has to be unanimous because a lot of times we may agree to disagree.
Yes, ma'am, I have it.
Is there any other concerns from Commissioner Wilson?
I have a question. So if the county's seeking to rename a road due to relocate the main road off, so that, I have one in my district, so the county's looking for a, to rename that road, is that going to apply here?
So the Board of Commissioners will have to take action on the renaming of those roads.
But does the name of the road has to, do they have to follow all the criteria?
So the county would not, because that would be action taken by the county. So for example, where our SPOS department has built new roads or created new roads or created extensions where the names may be duplicated, then that would just be a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the name of that road. And so you wouldn't have to submit an application to the county clerk, but we wouldn't need a resolution naming that road.
Like in the past? In the past, we've done that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Robinson?
My question is, we're passing on the costs to the applicant, can you explain why we're passing on that cost?
Because this is not a request from the board, it is honorary markers and it's an expense that the county has to take on. Now, if it's just a generalized sign that's created by our sign shop, then obviously the county can take on that cost. But if it's something where they're wanting particular designs, then that is something that we would pass on to the applicant. We did it most recently for a church, I believe in District three, that was requesting some honorary markers, and part of that resolution included all costs being passed on to the church for those markers. But certainly, if that's something that the board wants us to strike through, remove, make commitments to, we can certainly do whatever the board likes because this is a policy that you all will be creating.
Okay, and then if so, they contact the clerk's office to receive this information?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's it for right now?
Okay.
Angela?
No questions, thank you, Sherry.
Okay.
I just have one question, and I think I asked you earlier, but just for everyone. I just want to make sure this policy didn't preclude us, say we built a convention center and we had a sponsor, sponsorship. So I just want to make sure, like, how the sponsorship follows this.
Yes, Commissioner Lewis inquired if we were to build a aquatic center, or, well, we are building an aquatic center, or another amphitheater, although we're not building another amphitheater, but if we had a facility, then the sponsorship requests would come to the board and the board would in return approve a memorandum of understanding between us and that sponsor. And so in that instance, that would be a separate process that we'd bring to the board.
I have several questions and comments. My first question is, what has been the process in the past of naming new county-built roads? Like, how do those, those names come about?
So Commissioner Price, there has not been a process, and so it varies. We've had motions made from the floor, from previous boards to name facilities. For example, our aquatic center was just a motion that was made from the floor by the board naming our aquatic center for three individuals in the community. For road names, most often, and I think I remember one or two where we have had road names that have changed, we have brought that to the board, but there has not been a written policy. I believe about three or four months ago, we had a community here where we were changing a section of the roadway, and we brought that to the board for consideration. And because we don't have a policy, we want to bring it so that the board can at least see the requests that are coming in. But there has not, and I have not been able to find a written policy for the renaming of roads and/or facilities in the county.
Okay, and also in the resolution, it states that, which I do not agree with, the applicants paying the fees that's associated with the signage. But in, on the building, I think roads as well, number three states that there will be input from the public. And I just, you know, don't think it would be right for the public to have the input if they're not putting in, paying the fees that these applicants are having to pay. So I do not, again, agree with the applicant having to pay for any parts of the application process, the notifications, or either the manufacturer, installation, maintenance, or even replacing of the sign. Because I think in the resolution, it states that the applicant will be responsible for all of those costs, getting the sign made, having it installed, if it is damaged or stolen or whatever, they have to pay again to get it replaced. And I just don't think, if we're going to honor our citizens for the sacrifice that they've given to the community, the county should, you know, absorb those costs. Also.
I disagree, but okay.
There's another one, number six, that says that it can only have one name. I think it's on number six, that it shall be just one name, one designation per facility per individual will be considered. And I know we have here in Atlanta our Hartsfield Jackson International Airport, which holds two names. So I really, you know, wouldn't want to tie our hands into saying we can only have that one. Then it talks about also that whatever name is given, then it's basically, I think number ten would be that way forever. And I would not like to tie our hands like this, that we wouldn't have the ability to, you know, make any changes in, in those types of situations. So those are just my concerns about the resolution.
Okay, so County Manager, I'm asking to table this until we can have further discussion because then we would have to create a budget. And during the process, you know, people have always, I know, living in the Lake Spivey community previously, when we wanted to get sign toppers to identify our community as Lake Spivey, we had to pay for those toppers. And so that will create an additional expense and a budget line item that we'd have to figure out how we're going to pay for. So let's table this until another time. We'll bring it back next board meeting. Do I need a motion to?
Well, I will second that, but I would like for board to consider that we not rename any roads, bridges, or any government structures until we have this in place.
Correct. And we'll bring it back next board meeting, so I need a motion.
So I will make a motion with the addition that I added. So I will make a motion with the addition that I added to that.
And our next board meeting is?
The twenty-ninth of May.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor.
I second.
Okay.
All in favor. Okay? All opposed.
I'm opposed only because that probably won't be at the twenty-ninth board meeting.
Okay, then we'll make it the first meeting in June.
Okay, so just for point of order, I want to make sure that I have the motion correct. As I understand, Commissioner Anglin's motion is to not approve, authorize, or rename any roads, structures, or any other items as outlined in this resolution until we have a policy in place.
That's correct.
Madam Chair seconded the motion and it was?
We'll move it to the first meeting in June.
First meeting in June.
To make sure that we have all commissioners here.
Okay.
So all in favor.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next item is the planning and zoning, public hearing, ULDC Amendment twenty-four dash oh-one.
Good morning, Chair, board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is a request to amend the Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, and how it regulates front yard fences. Chapter seven, section seven oh-two oh-four of the ULDC provides the code section for fences. Current code allows for front yard fences to be requested and that would require an approval from the Architecture Review Committee. Front yard fences with its current code can be as tall as six feet in height. That goes for properties that are zoned RA or properties that are outside of a subdivision. The Architecture Review Committee that decides the front yard fence requests, that is an internal review committee made up representatives from the Building Department, Planning and Zoning, and the DOT Department. Other departments may be invited, for example, SLOST in instances of a future road widening. The request before you would be to provide another allowance for those properties that can request a front yard fence, allow for properties within subdivisions that are not taking access off of the internal road. So the fence will need to be decorative in nature. Justification or hardship is provided with a request. Property does not gain access again from that platted internal subdivision street and the request is reviewed and approved by the Architecture Review Committee. This is an example of a subdivision. As you can see, it is all zoned R-one. Those lots outlined in red, they are actually part of that subdivision that is just northwest of it, kind of in this area here, all within the subdivision, including those red lots. So this amendment would again allow for those lots outlined in red to potentially request for that front yard fence request. Staff felt it important to make the distinction between these lots, taking access from an internal subdivision street, and those from a heavy traffic road such as Jodico or Jonesboro Road, in this instance, Jodico Road. Oftentimes, we receive front yard fence requests as a result of safety concerns, heavy traffic, cars speeding by, they want to provide that front yard fence for safety reasons, allow their children or dogs, pets to play in. Viewing the properties from the street, you wouldn't really be able to identify them as being within a subdivision. On March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the applicant's request to amend section seven oh-two oh-four regarding front yard fences. Again, lots that do not gain access from the internal subdivision street may submit for a decorative front yard fence. That is what was recommended by the zoning advisory board that is shown on the left side. At a later date, we did receive some comments from Public Safety regarding allowable height for front yard fences. That was brought to staff's attention and with that, staff would like to amend the recommendation with the change that the max height shall be reduced from six feet down to four feet, still just in addition to the zoning advisory board's recommendation. That is all that I have for you. Thank you so much, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, I'm, Commissioner?
It's my district.
I have a couple of questions. First question is, I'm looking at the amendment to the ULDC and it does not state anything regarding HOAs because the way this reads subdivision, it means that we could potentially put the county in an adversarial deal with an HOA, and that is not what we want to do.
Absolutely. With the Architecture Review Committee, we would require instances of properties in a subdivision to have HOA approval.
Is that listed in here?
It doesn't read like that.
That is not stated in there.
Okay, so then you would need to add that.
Right.
And I just have a problem with the type of fencing that could really make, you know, I think of our arterial roads and if everybody decided to put up a wooden fence along a particular road, I think that that is just, it takes away from the aesthetics of the community and the neighborhood and I just have a total issue with this whole thing.
And I have one more thing. I know we're about to rewrite the ULDC, so I guess my question is, why would we do amendments to the ULDC when we're about to rewrite the ULDC?
Certainly. We've received a couple of requests for front yard fences, again, for those properties that would be in a situation such as this. Only recently, we've had someone actually take the step to amend the ULDC. Certainly, we are going through that revision. Not all sections of the code would be revised, certainly predominantly a lot of it, but, you know, if it's the pleasure of the board to approve this, for example, we would probably just stick this right in with our poll update.
So I guess my question would be, the barbed wire, the weld and hog wire and electric, when would those fences be utilized? Is that something that would be utilized in a community?
Can I get the overhead? Thank you. So this is just an image of what is being recommended. The RA zoning district, we see different categories, decorative fence, chain link, et cetera. Those are permitted in the RA zoning district. Within the next row over, rather column, we see within subdivisions, that side and rear yard is the only one with that asterix. That would only allow for fences in such situations as this to request a decorative front yard fence, wood, stone, masonry, or wrought iron. This amendment would not allow for a barbed wire fence, for example, to be in a property located in a subdivision.
Any other questions from the board?
What district is this, Kenton?
So this would be a countywide text amendment. The property owner that initiated the request, that is District Two.
Okay. And the conversation was had when you go from six to four, did it talk, we talked about the safety piece of it? Was there a problem with our public safety?
Yes, we did receive some comments from Public Safety and they are here today if you want to hear from them specifically. Essentially, visibility was a concern. Fire Department particularly wanted, preferred rather, to keep visibility as well as they can, which is why staff recommended reduction from six feet down to four feet.
So I have a question with, I'm sorry, Commissioner Robinson, were you?
Go ahead.
You're done, I'm sorry. The wood, where it says decorative, are you proposing that they would do a wood fence that would surround the entire house?
They could with the amendment. Our current code would allow of eight-foot-tall fence around the sides and rear of the property with the amendment's four-foot-high fence, potentially solid wood fence. And if I may, I do have some examples of what front yard fences could look like.
And do you have a picture of where this will be is the question here as well, while you're showing photos? Do you have the pictures from the applicant of their property?
The applicant may have those images. That was not part of the application materials.
So I think, like a lot of us, I think we have some visibility concerns when it comes to the front yard. It's not that maybe we're opposed to front yard fences, but we have visibility concerns of what can be seen and the materials being used. I'm going to make a motion that we table this until that first meeting in June so that staff can have some conversation with the district commissioners to address that. Thank you.
But this is a public hearing, so we have to move forward with the public hearing. So if there's anyone that want to come and speak in favor of the change in other amendment, please come forward. You have ten minutes collectively to address the board. This is your time.
Madam Chair? Although it's countywide, the application was filed by an applicant, and so the applicant needs to come up, present their request, and then we open it up for the public hearing because it's not initiated by county.
Okay, all right. Well, applicant come present.
We're waiting on that to be passed out. I want it to be clear because my colleague for District Three indicated for me to have a conversation. Staff and myself and the applicant have had a conversation regarding this, so it's not like it's just been put in place, and that's why I had the conversation for them, for staff, for Public Safety, to ask the questions. So I just want to make sure that is clear.
Can you let him finish passing that out so we can move forward with the meeting and you can go ahead and present, please?
Start the timer, Jasmine.
Good morning.
Glad to have you all here today or that we could be here today and present to you all. We have had this property here in Henry County now for more than forty years. My wife's a lifelong resident here of Henry County. We own businesses, businesses in the county as well. We've lived here at this intersection of Jodico Road, Noah's Ark, and Oakleaf Drive for the last two years. My father passed away and we decided to move our residence to the original family home that he built and my mom built back.
We're going to need you to speak into the mic so we can hear you.
Nineteen eighty-three. So we have had a significant amount of increase in traffic and congestion in the front of our home. Our enjoyment of this property has been very limited due to the numerous traffic accidents and things going on in front of our neighborhood. The fence that we proposed to put in is a decorative fence and you've got an example of that. We do have small pets that we keep on the property. And yeah, we just, we want to have some quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood till we are no longer here, but this property will eventually become a commercial, commercial property right at the intersection of Jodico Road and Noah's Ark and Oakleaf Drive. I would estimate there's probably over twenty thousand cars a day that pass there. But it's constant sirens and traffic and noise makes it hard for a resident to enjoy their property. But being there for as long as we have, which, over forty years, it's just a highly congested area and we don't like looking at it all day, every day. The topography out at Jodico Road is at least five and six foot higher than Jodico Road itself already, so we've got a natural earthen buffer on the very, very front of the property. The fence is just to make it look nicer and the landscape plan that we provided, that's for the trees and the shrubs and everything we're planning on putting in once the fence is finished. But we've been working on this property for, August will be two years.
So you've already built the fence, correct?
No, we started it, yeah.
So this is what, the proposed?
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I do have a concern with any solid fence, a wooden solid fence that's facing a public road. Over my years on the board, when these fence, these type fence starting to deteriorate, we had to call, somebody would call code enforcement. So when the code enforcement goes out, they're going to write a citation or give you a warning to get the fence back up to code. But then after that, if it's not up to code, they come back out and they may write you a citation, then you may have to go to court. That court date can be pushed back several months. And so I've seen these fences deteriorate over my years on the board and it's just, they can be an eyesore. But if they're well maintained, they're nice, but what I've seen, a lot of them's not. So I, and there's new orders that they're looking at. I would just say any fence, all fence that's going to be from the property line to a public road needs to be a horizontal fence.
A hard what?
Horizontal, like a split rail in wood. So that's just my concerns about these type fences.
Yeah, this fence is particularly made out of cedar, which is, the home is a cedar log home, over forty years old, well-maintained, and yeah, cedar does not deteriorate like pine, and that's what most of these wooden fences that you see in the county use. Cedar is two dollars and thirty cents a foot, where pine is a dollar a foot. That's why people use it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. My concern with this, with it being countywide, what would happen if the floodgates were open? Everybody started doing this, just how would that make the county look? So that is my concern, it being countywide.
Well, it's just for lots that are out, that are part of a subdivision that are not taking access from that subdivision road, like Kenton.
that are not taking access from that subdivision road, like, uh, Kent showed on the beginning of the slide. There's only four lots in our neighborhood that front Jodico Road.
Right, that's just in your area, but the resolution states countywide.
Most subdivisions, they've cut a road in, and each resident takes access off of that interior subdivision road. So in those subdivision roads, they would not be able to put a fence in the front yard. It's just the houses or the properties that face the main road that are brought into that neighborhood by the developer, that's the ones that, uh, would be allowed for that because they front a major thoroughfare or a major road.
Yeah, I, I still have an issue with the countywide thing.
Yeah, that was the recommendation that we had, that we take this approach rather than asking for a special exception and get an approval as just one property. Nobody seemed to wanna honor that request or accept it. They wanted us to go through this process with the board and, uh, and get y'all's permission to do it, and do it at a countywide level.
And to add to that real quick, our current code does allow for front yard fence requests just if it's outside of a subdivision or zoned RA.
Okay, but he's part of a subdivision.
Yes, this amendment certainly would allow for, um, more allowances. Um, I will say that, um, it's typically older subdivisions that we see, lots taking access off of the arterial road, for example, and newer subdivisions, they, they have their lots facing internally.
So can we not separate this out and just deal with this one issue, and then at some time come back and look at it from a countywide perspective? I'm not ready to make a decision today on a countywide, but, um, I mean, he's here for a public hearing for his particular fence, so, uh, can we separate this county manager and do?
So, I think the issue is, and why staff probably advised of the text amendment, the only other option would be a variance, and variances are granted if there's some form of a hardship, if there was a topography issue, or if there's a sewer line or something of that nature. And so our county code would not allow staff to administratively or in any form of a zoning action, bring to this board or the zoning advisory board, um, an allowance that is expressly prohibited per the code. So the only way that it can be changed is if the code is modified to allow this such use, um, outside of the, the Unified Land Development Code.
I'd like to make a request that we table this until the first meeting in June, to give us an opportunity to, um, look further at this, uh, proposed ULDC change, 'cause I just don't think any of us are really comfortable with approving something countywide right now.
So I, I'd like to ask staff, because I'm not sure and I need clarification, the fence is already installed, correct?
Uh.
It looked installed when I drove by, so I'm just, I wanna get clarification, because I wanna make sure code enforcement hasn't already issued a citation. Has there been a citation issued or anything at this point?
No.
No, but the fence is up, correct?
I believe at least a portion of the fence is up.
Okay, and so.
If you look at this, it's on the side, it's not on the front.
The, the front is defined as anything.
You can leave it on.
Sorry, anything between the home and the road, so that goes from side property line to side property line. So anything in this area is the front.
Okay.
And I only ask that question because we wanna make sure that if the board is going to table this, then we need to give them the ability not to have a citation issued to go to court. So whatever motion the board makes, we just need to make sure that we stay this case, um, because code enforcement will go out, um, because it is prohibited per the code.
I, I just got one comment. Um, I'm not opposed to fences, but this will impact District Three, and that's why I wanna have some conversation with staff, 'cause we have a lot of older subdivisions that do have HOAs and stuff that do sit on the main road. So I just need some time to review the impact that it's gonna be to those subdivisions. They do sit on main thoroughfares.
Right, so we are going to table this till the first meeting in June, and we're asking code enforcement on this particular case not to issue any citations until we can settle this matter. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing regarding our FY twenty twenty-five, um, budget.
Today is our first public hearing as we move into the final phases of review and adoption of the FY twenty-five general fund budget. I ask that I am allowed to go through my entire presentation first, and that all questions are held until the end. I will begin by reminding everyone of our general budget philosophy. This philosophy has been incorporated into each annual budget. The tenet of that philosophy is to maintain the current millage rate of twelve point seven three three mils, offer fair and competitive salaries and benefits for our employees, advance board priorities and strategic partnerships, and fund department essentials to maintain current service levels for Henry County residents. Our goal is to create a balanced budget utilizing available revenues to fund projected expenditures and to not build our budget based on utilizing fund balance to fund recurring operations. For the last seven years, we have held true to this philosophy, all while the county's millage rate remained unchanged at twelve point seven three three mils. During the budget workshop held on April ninth with the Board of Commissioners, the finance team presented a general fund budget of two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million dollars, which is twenty point seven million dollars higher, or an eight point seven percent year-over-year increase compared to the FY twenty-four revised budget of two hundred and thirty-eight point nine million dollars. Listed on the right-hand side of the slide are some of the major items that were included in the proposed budget of two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million dollars. Some of those items were four point three million dollars for pension funding and insurance increases, four million dollars for employee colon longevity, one point four million dollars debt payments, one point three million dollars funding for DOT resurfacing, one point two million dollars for MA medical and food costs at the jail, four hundred and twelve thousand countywide technology service contract increases, and one point six million dollars for all other departmental costs and contractual increases, four hundred and forty-six thousand increased translator, indigent defense, and court reporter costs. The budget of two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million dollars was enough to keep the departments operating at the current service levels and address some of the expense increase, increases that are being felt throughout the county. Because our projected expenses of two hundred and fifty-nine point seven million dollars exceeded our projected revenues of two hundred and fifty-one point five million dollars, this created an eight million dollar shortfall. The shortfall came after considering the following revenue assumptions. We assume modest increases in property tax growth in FY twenty-five of four point five percent. This is very different than the normal double-digit growth that we have previously seen, which is normally a mix of inflationary and real growth. Some of the drivers to this decrease are the increase in home prices compared to previous years, residential markets appear to be stabilizing, and home mortgage interest rates appear to be a major factor. We are continuing to see growth in the industrial and commercial sectors. Another major assumption that we discussed concerns sales tax revenue. Due to the changes in some buyers' habits, meaning they are preferring to do more shopping online versus shopping in-store, we are beginning to see our sales tax revenue begin to stabilize. A revenue category that once provided anywhere from five to seven percent year-over-year growth has now begun to stabilize and even begun showing some signs of decline. Therefore, we are not expecting any year-over-year growth in this revenue category. Because those two revenue categories account for more than seventy-eight percent of our general fund revenue, we are projecting general fund revenue at two fifty-one point five million dollars currently, with an additional one point three million dollars in revenue expected to come from McDonough residents to cover the fire-automatic aid agreement between the county and the city of McDonough, agreed to in the service delivery strategy that went into effect in twenty twenty-one. During the budget workshop on April ninth, to address this shortfall, the finance team included assumptions for a public safety millage increase of one point nine two five mils that will provide additional funding for police and fire. Just to remind everyone, public safety was defined as police and fire, since they have been separately identified and separated out into their own service districts in the service delivery strategy agreement. Police and fire service districts currently have distinct millage rates that are calculated and charged on the taxpayer's property tax bill to charge Henry County residents for the services being provided, based upon the locale in which the taxpayer's home or business is located. To avoid double taxation, the sheriff's office was not included in the proposed public safety millage increase, as it provides services to the entire county, is not, and is not separated out into its own service district. Based on feedback received after the workshop meeting, we have now come up with four additional proposals for the board to consider. In each scenario, we will briefly discuss the pros and the cons of each one. Once we have discussed all four options, we will provide a finance recommendation as to which option we believe best addresses the county's funding needs and priorities. Option one, no millage rate increase. This just simply means we will maintain the current miller, current millage rate of twelve point seven three three mils. In the bottom chart, you will see the current and proposed millage rates remain unchanged. Under this option, we would have the following pros and cons. We would have a balanced budget, there would be no increase in the millage rate, and we would address one of the, we would address one of the BLC initiatives of providing employees with quality benefit choices and competitive salaries. The cons of this option would be no departmental requests will be addressed, capital requests would not be funded, and we would not have any funding available for new debt, which would include debt related to projects such as building a new courthouse, public safety training facility, tax commissioner satellite office in Locust Grove, an additional jail pod, or funding for the central energy plant. Option two, fire and police millage rate increase of one point nine two five mils. This would be a fire and police millage increase of one point nine two five mils. Fire would, it, would receive an increase of point nine six three mils, police would receive an increase of point nine six two mils, and the millage rates for all other service districts remain unchanged. The pros of this option, this would make fire and police service districts self-supporting. This would align these two service districts with the intended outcomes provided for in the service delivery strategy agreement. This would create a ten point eight million dollar surplus for fire, which, which could be used for operating or capital expenditures. We will be able to address forty-two percent of the department's FY twenty-five operational requests. The cons of this option, this would only fund current service levels for all departments. This would not include any funding for future growth or additional department needs. This does not include any new personnel requests received from departments. This does not include funding for departmental capital needs other than fire, and there would be a tax increase to the homeowners. So for a five hundred thousand dollar home with frozen exemption, again, these are just estimates, there would be a two hundred and sixty dollar, uh, increase for the year, which would equate to about twenty-two dollars per month. For a three hundred thousand dollar home with frozen exemption, we're estimating about a hundred and six dollar per year increase, which is about nine dollars per month. The next option is the fire-only millage increase of two point five mils. This is a fire-only millage based on current departmental needs, and the millage rate for all other service districts remain unchanged. Under this option, fire and EMS-related expenses were increased by fourteen point six million dollars, to take into account the increased personnel and operating expense that is going to be required for the fire department to obtain the staffing and operational costs needed related to adding new personnel and opening, opening two new fire stations. The pros of this option, the fire department will become NFPA-staffing compliant, they will become an accredited organization, they will receive an ISO rating of one, where we currently have a two, and this will cover the operating expenses of opening stations eighteen and nineteen slated to open in FY twenty-seven and twenty-eight. This will create a nine point eight million dollar surplus for fire to use on operating and capital needs. The cons of this option, this will require us to remove seventy-seven general fund vacancies from all other departments, except constitutional officers and fire vacancies. This would not, this would not allow us to fund any, this would not allow funding for any available new debt, such as the central energy plant, the new courthouse, jail pod, tax commissioner satellite office in Locust Grove. There would be a tax increase to the homeowners. For the, for a five hundred thousand dollar home with frozen exemption, there would be a three hundred and thirty-eight dollar increase per year, which equates to about twenty-eight dollars per month. A three hundred thousand dollar home with frozen exemption, there would be a hundred and thirty-eight dollar increase per year, which is about twelve dollars per month. Option four, general millage increase of three mils. This is a general millage increase of three mils. The three mils will be split. One point nine two five would go to public safety. Fire would receive point nine six three mils, police would receive point nine six two mils, and the remaining one point zero seven five mils will be split among the other districts as follows. The general fund millage will be, would be reduced by one point zero one three. Fire would receive an additional point one five eight mils. The rec district would receive point three six one mils, and the unincorporated district would receive point zero one eight mils. The pros of this option, there will be a total surplus of seventeen million dollars across all service districts. Each service district will have some funding available for future capital and operating needs, we will be able to maintain current service levels to keep up with current growth, and all service districts will be self-supporting in accordance with the service delivery strategy agreement. The cons of this option, there would be a tax increase to the homeowners. For a five hundred thousand dollar home with frozen exemption, there would be a four hundred and five dollar increase per year, which equates to thirty-four dollars per month. A three hundred thousand dollar home with frozen exemption, the increase would be a hundred and sixty-five dollars per year, which is about fourteen dollars per month. Based upon the four options provided, finance is recommending the general millage rate increase. Under this option, all service districts receive a benefit, and we are not limiting any revenue increases to just fire and police. Under this option, we can appropriately plan for future needs across the entire organization, and more appropriately budget and plan for the needs in the districts providing the services. This allows us to begin to set aside funding for all of our future planned capital projects, including the central energy plant, the tax commissioner satellite office, the new jail pod, the new courthouse, and the new EMA E nine one one facility. This concludes my presentation. At this time, I will pause and take whatever questions you may have.
Thank you.
I have several questions, but I think I'm, I got one question, I got several comments.
This one, this is a public hea, uh, we're gonna do the public hearing first?
And I'll wait to after the comments, but yes, ma'am?
Okay. So, this is a public hearing. Um, Jasmine, do we have, uh, anyone signed up for public hearing?
We have two signed up.
Okay.
The first is Chief Judge Brian Merrill.
And is Judge Merrill here? Okay, and who else?
Then Chief Judge, um, Vincent Lottie.
Okay, Chief Lottie.
I yield my time, Madam Chair.
Uh, come on.
I yield my time.
No, come on. Wanna hear what you got to say?
Well.
How about this, we'll boil it down to, uh, my purpose is really to thank you, the entire board and the county manager, for the support that you show the court, specifically state court, to allow us to continue to serve, uh, the people of this community, my community, the community that raised me. Uh, after all, that's what we're there for, that's why that word servant is in our title, public servant, that's what we should be here for. Um, I can tell you that Judge Lewis, Judge Bailey, Judge Knights, and myself are eternally grateful to, that the support that this board and that the county manager has shown us. Uh, as our numbers continue to grow, and, and as the board's aware, we're busting at the seams, but we're meeting our goal, which is to set the standard in the state of Georgia for state court operations, and to, uh, serve the people of our community, to get them their court date in a timely fashion, uh, and we're able to continue doing that as numbers grow, thanks to the help and support of this board and to our county manager. So. So, thank you all so much for the support, please keep it coming, because I promise you we will be there every day to work for the people of this community. So, if no other questions, then I'll be glad to yield my time.
So are you all having an increase in the courts with?
Massively, Chair, massively.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, ma'am. Last year, the Henry County State Court, between the four state court judges, as I said, Judge Lewis, Judge Knights, Judge Bailey, and myself, we cleared almost 30,000 cases between traffic, criminal, and civil. And then we also won an award for Clearance Rate Excellence Award, which is an award given by the Supreme Court of Georgia that acknowledges courts in the top 10%, which means we closed at least 100% of the cases that we opened, which means as fast as folks have to have a court date, we're getting them that court date, we're getting them in court, we're getting this out from over their heads, and we're getting them on their way. And so that number's going to continue to rise as our county continues to grow, which it is doing. Every year, we're seeing about a 3,000 to 4,000 roughly increase in the number of cases that state court is handling, but we are handling it, and we're getting it done, and like I said, a lot of that comes from the support that we get from this board and from our county manager, because as our needs as a county change, so do our needs as a court, and you guys are allowing us to adopt in order to keep serving the people of this community.
And so are you in need of staffing?
Very much so, very much so, to be honest with you, Chair. We're overrun, we have, we have people who are working on the weekends, we have people who are staying late, we have people that honestly are having to work around the clock in order to manage their caseloads. We need probation officers, we need clerks. We've taken on, since state court was established, we've taken on about five or six new, I guess, job descriptions, from handling first appearance bonds to having to collect rent in appeals from magistrate court. The law states that we now have to collect the rent every month and hold it in the registry of the court. The amount of money that flows through the clerk's office has grown astronomically from very little into roughly $50 to $100 million a year that has to be accounted for, and we are taking on all of these new tasks, which create a major workload with no additional staffing. Our probation numbers of that roughly 30,000 cases we did last year, almost all of them touched probation in some form or fashion, and that's a lot of people to supervise with very few personnel, and we've been able to do it with no additional personnel. But obviously, people can only work so hard, right, before they begin to burn out, and that's not what we want. We're not in the business of burning people out so we don't provide a quality service to our community. And so that is something that we desperately need, is personnel. By our numbers alone, we should have more judges at state court than what we currently do, but like I said, we're burning the candle at both ends, and we're busting at the seams, but right now, we're keeping the floods back, and the floodgates are holding, but yes, ma'am, we need personnel, and we needed it yesterday, not tomorrow. But we understand that there's a process, and that this board is doing everything it can, and we know if we're patient, and we give it time, you guys are doing your due diligence, and you'll get us what we need. We just need to stay the course. And thankfully, we have a team of dedicated people who go way above and beyond what they're paid in order to serve the community.
Thank you. Is there any questions of Judge Lottie from the board?
I don't have any, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, well, okay, so are there any questions for, any questions from the board for Judge Lottie? Okay.
Thank you, Judge Lottie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, did you want to?
Yeah, I did have one question about the increase of fire. Now, are we looking at putting the fire on, for a separate fire tax on the tax bill?
So you want to, this is a option here, the fire?
Well, if you go up on the fire, if you put additional money into the fire milage rate, are we going to separate the fire from the general fund and put the fire on its separate fire tax on the tax bill?
So, it's already broken out into those five service districts?
But I'm not talking about service districts, I'm talking about when we break down the milage rate, with the fire department not in the special service district, but will they have their own line item on the tax bill as a fire tax, and separate them from the special service districts?
So, Commissioner Wilson, their tax is specifically for their service district. There, I mean, we can break out the line, that's a tax commissioner question with regard to how that needs to be broken out on a tax bill, that's really an answer best provided by your tax commissioner, but in terms of our service delivery agreement, we're supposed to be providing any increases for any milage rate for those service districts.
Okay, so, that was my question. Now I've got several comments.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things on the impact fees. The majority of the board, back in 2022, passed a impact fee increase from 1661-50 to 3544-46, that's on a residential structure, on permit. In the first fee schedule of 1661, PD was only getting $110.55 out of that 1661, fire was getting 25509. Under the new impact fee schedule, transportation gets 1378, parson wreck gives 1213, fire and rescue gets 263, not much increase from the original, PDs get 123. Now, I'm not sure we asking for an increase in milage rate for fire and PD for public safety, but they're one of the lowest ones on the collection for impact fees. So that's something we need to clean up, and I think there's been talk since we passed this to go to $10,000 instead of 3544. So I think that's something we need to do internally to take the relief off of some of our taxpayers. I visited one of my constituents last week, and he says, "I understand that they want to go up on my tax bill." I said, "That's the discussion." He said, "Why?" I said, "Because of growth." He said, "I didn't vote for growth, y'all did." I said, "You're absolutely correct." So with that growth comes impact fees. So I think we need to be collecting our max impact fees for the people coming in, and not collecting additional taxes for the people who's been here forever. My second one, on the SDS agreement, and I think you hit on this, collecting the McDonald portion of the tax of 40.45%, have we collected anything from McDonald Fire?
We have not collected anything currently from McDonald Fire.
So we should be collecting, getting all them collections together, make sure we are keeping all our money where it needs to be from internally? And then we have the audit. I hadn't heard anything out of a current audit, maybe we need an audit update to see where we at. I think the last audit we had was what, '21, '22?
The last audit that we've recently completed was for '21, we're in the process of completing fiscal year 2022, which should be done by the middle of May.
So when do they start on the '23 audit? I guess it starts right after the '22's completed, is that correct?
Commissioner, our plan is to roll right into doing the '23 audit after we complete '22, with the goal of completing it sometime by mid-July-August timeframe, so that we will be caught up by the end of December of this year, completing the '24 audit.
And so in SPOSS 6, every SPOSS program that's ever been approved in Henry County has, every county building facility has been built out of a SPOSS fund. I'm not sure currently where we at on having our capital for our training facility, our N911 facility, and any other county facility added to SPOSS 6. It's, are we, is that on our list? Does anyone, can anyone answer that question for me?
I don't know, that would be a Director Romero question, I don't know. I know they're continually going through discussions now with regard to the list for SPOSS 6. I know, because I did attend a couple of those meetings, that that is one of the items that had been discussed, but in terms of completing a list, the final list, I don't think has been completed, or whether that's been added or not, but it's been discussed.
Okay, so my last thing is, have we went through each department and see what we can cut out of those departments that's not, that's not important to this budget? What can we cut? And I'd say start with the Board of Commissioners, I mean, we have a budget of, I don't know, it's pretty high, I got a budget here, even start with us and work our way down and see what can we do without. And that way, we can, then we can see at the end of the day, once we go through all the departmental budgets, see what we can do without, adjust a CIA amendment for, for we can collection out in our impact fees, get our SDS agreements and get those collections coming up, get an audit here, and let's see what we can do with SPOSS 6, and then we can talk about what we need to do far as a milage rate increase. And that's all the comments I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Romero?
I come in agreement with Commissioner Wilson, because when we're talking about, I don't know if this is on, but when we're talking about the ISO rating with our fire department, I mean, that increases our insurance, right? And if we haven't. Had an audit since 2021, and we're just coming on 2022, it seems like to me that we're putting the cart before the horse, because we're not actually caught up with the audit, which is major, but then we're saying that we want to, you know, put out a tax. So I don't think it's fair for the constituents to be able to have to bear that when we're kind of behind here in the county when it comes to our audit. And again, the impact fees, I think the fire needs to be at the top, because when we're saving on our insurance because of the rating, constituents will be able to see the change for us when they're receiving their tax bills. So that's what I have for now, but I know I'm gonna have some more comments probably at the end, but I'll hope yield for now.
Just got a couple of comments. First, David, thank y'all for putting together probably the best presentation on the budget that I have seen to date, that is simplistic and easy for us to understand and follow, allowing for our constituents to see the decisions that we are looking at, and the choices that are there. So thank you, I appreciate that. Our greatest duty that we have here is our fiduciary duty to the county. That is not something we take lightly. Those are all the comments I have to make at this time, thank you.
Yeah, good morning, once again, yeah, thank you very much, I really appreciate you showing the options, because a lot of times, you know, budgets will be presented with just one option, so this gives us the opportunity to see what the different options are, and more importantly, it gives the public the opportunity to see what the options are and what they entail, especially as far as how they would impact them. One request I do have is, knowing that a fire tax would be for fire, I would also like to see added to that what that impact would be on the ISO rating as far as the taxpayers and what they could see relief for in their insurance bills, because you can actually see, okay, if we do this for fire, this is the relief I will see on the other side. I think that's very good for the public to see, okay, how much would this save us? If we invest here, what is it going to save us on the other side? One other thing I want to talk about, we talked about impact fees, impact fees are one-time fees, and impact fees will not sustain you over the length of time, that is just a one-time permit fee, and truthfully, it really only goes to the district in where the building permit was issued, so if you don't have any growth in your district, then you won't see any impact in your district. So, also, like I said, just knowing that we do have a fiduciary duty for the county and its citizens, but we also have a duty to make sure that we prepare for the future. That is imperative, you know, and I don't think there's any commissioner sitting on his board who doesn't wish that one of their predecessors would have made a different decision to make it easier for traffic and many other items that we have of note in this county that we have to prepare. The goal of each commissioner up here should be that we leave it better for our successors. And so having said that, I'll leave it at that, and once again, thank you for the proposals, there's a lot that we have to consider, and I am a little disappointed that we only had two people sign up for public comment, and they both work for the county. And I'm saying that to everybody sitting here watching. Frequently, we hear people, "Oh, you can't do this, you shouldn't raise our taxes, you shouldn't do these types of things," but then when it's time for people to show up and make their voices heard, there's no one here. So, citizens, anybody who's watching, and our citizens who are in the audience, we all have a right to come and say what we want to see, but you have to exercise that right. You have to come out here, you have to contact us, you have to get up here and make sure that your voice is heard. Don't wait until the tax bill comes in the mail, and then get on Facebook and Nextdoor and have an issue, this is your opportunity to make sure that your voice is heard. We have to have a budget adopted before July 1. So we have about six weeks, really, for people to make their voices heard, so I would employ anybody in the county to make sure that your voice, so first of all, make sure you're educated as to what we're talking about, and then, second of all, make sure your voice is heard so that we can make our best decision for you and us as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Just want to thank you also for excellent presentation that you've given, not only to us, but to the citizens who are here, and whether it's those who are watching. And again, I just, you know, want us to be reminded that, you know, the cost of living for everybody and every entity is going up. It costs individuals more to buy gas, also costs the county more to buy gas for their vehicles and purchase auto parts, or whatever the case may be. And so if we really want to be that county, then our old saying is, you have to pay to play. A neighbor of mine told me, you know, we want to live in Buckhead, we want to pay bankhead prices. I don't want to criticize anybody from Bankhead, but you get the picture. And so I, you know, certainly myself want to see Henry County do more and be more, unfortunately, in order for us to be able to obtain and get things that we need for the county and to get the best of that, and to also prepare for future growth, you know, we've got to make sure that we have the revenue to be able to do that. I do want to say this, though, or ask this question, or make this statement first and then ask the question, because recently, I just learned the process myself, that when we service cities, or the incorporated cities of the county, they are supposed to be paying the county for those services, police, fire, whatever the case may be. And I just want to know, is there an amount that we know that they owe us, and then whatever that amount is, is there a process put in place to make sure that we are being paid for the service that we're providing for the incorporated cities of our county?
Yes, Commissioner Price, we do know the amount that the city of McDonough owes us in terms of their fire district piece, we're currently working with our county attorney to send a bill over to the city of McDonough for that amount. With regard to impact fees, we've also worked with our county attorney to develop a letter to send to the cities with regard to the portion that they're supposed to be paying us for the impact fees to reimburse us for our parks costs. That's a bit more difficult, because we don't know the impact fees that the cities receive, and so we have to come up with a methodology to determine what that amount will be, but we are working through that.
Okay, before I make my comments, I'd like to ask our tax commissioner to come forward. I know that there was a question posed about the fire tax, whether it would be a line item on the tax bill, if it was dedicated to whether it was fire or whether it's public safety, would that? would that be a dedicated tax on the, on the tax bill?
Yeah. Good afternoon, good morning, rather, Chair and Board members. So on the bill currently, there's a line item for fire, special service district, police, special service district. It would be, and maintain that same, that same line item. So there would be no additional line item in that regard, it would simply be an adjustment to that line item that currently exists.
And so I think what the concern is for those that are, have some consideration on the public safety tax or special service district, that, that money is actually set aside and dedicated strictly for whether it would be fire or police or just fire.
That's correct. So the Board made a determination, I think back in 2020, to create these special service districts specifically for those specific needs, police and fire, recreation is another one. So those amounts and those millages associated with that particular line item goes towards those particular uses, whether it be fire or police services.
So I get this question posed to me all the time. The county's raising our taxes, and so I know that every year you come before and you make a presentation to talk about the frozen homestead exemption and that your taxes are maintained at the, at the level when you first purchase your home. I, I don't think people really pay attention to the fact that the school board, the taxes for schools are not part of the homestead exemption.
Right.
Which is where they see the increase in taxes.
Right. Well, yeah, we get that question on occasion as well in my office also. The school does have an exemption, it's an age-based exemption, and that begins at age 62. On the county taxes, again, if you, if you live in the county, you own your home and you have homestead, you've been paying that same rate, because again, the millage rate hasn't changed for over seven, six, seven years. So that county tax has not increased. That's been the same because of frozen, because frozen offsets that increase in value. So we hear the same thing, while your value has gone up, if you have homestead, it's been in place, then you have not seen that increase on your county taxes. You have seen that on your school taxes unless you've reached age 62 where you start seeing a deduction on your exemption based on age, but prior to that, the increase that, that's been reflected based on the valuation increase has been principally on the side of the school board taxes.
And, and the evaluation is, is based on the current market?
That is correct. Yeah, the Sessions Office does a phenomenal job in going through, they're bound by how they, their process and what they do to determine that evaluation, but they go through the metrics to make sure they determine that evaluation, and once they give us the valuation, again, I tell everyone, it's a very simple formula, value minus any exemptions times your millage rate is your tax. So if one of those components goes up, your taxes goes up. But again, to the point of frozen, I think it's important for people to know, that, that savings for county residents equates to, I think last time I talked to Mr. Self, ballpark around $45 million is the savings that citizens have realized on county taxes, so that's revenue that is not coming to the county, that is being, that is being the benefit of all of the citizens that currently have our homestead in place, and that are benefactors of that frozen provision.
So if we didn't have the frozen homestead, then we wouldn't be having this conversation?
That is correct. Well, you'd have, you'd have about additional $45 million in revenue from the county side.
And then we'd, then we'd be able to lower its, the real millage rate a little bit, so, you know? Okay, any questions of Mr. Harris from any members of the Board? Thank you, Commissioner Harris.
My pleasure.
Who are coming up to, to answer our questions. You know, the impact fees are not a way to make us sustainable. Commissioner Lewis, you are absolutely right, that's a one-time, and we cannot depend on that for our budget. I think overall, all of our departments have been very fiscal responsible with the funds that they've had. We've asked them to hold and not ask for increases in their budget other than the necessary increases when it comes to service contracts and postage and those types of things that we have to increase, you know, have to increase, but all of our departments, from the courts to public safety, to, you know, DOT and Public Works and everyone, have pretty much tried to hold steadfast of maintaining the budgets at levels that really is almost at a breaking point. You heard the judge say earlier that, you know, the cases have increased, the workload has increased, but the help, you know, they need positions, and so we have some tough decisions to make. I mean, in order for us to operate the county efficiently and effectively, we have to be able to make sure that our departments are funded. Or we can cut services. You know, we can cut services, and I'm sure that is not what, you know, our citizens want. And with regards to parks, you know, we ask for a quality of life and different things, but we want all these things, but we're not willing to pay for these things, and so, you know, I just, this, you know, it puts us in a tough decision. We have to make decisions as to the level of service that we wanna provide our citizens here in the county, and, you know, I'm just interested in how long have we been trying to collect the monies from the City of McDonough with regards to what they owe us from, from the fireside, and I would be interested in knowing what that amount is?
The amount is $2.6 million.
So $2.6 million that we've been trying to collect for how many, is this over a period of time, years?
Yes, this is, I think, over two or three fiscal years. I'm not exactly sure of the timing. I'll have to pull that up, and I can tell you.
The SDS agreement was signed in December 29, 2020.
So just as the Tax Commissioner, if we don't collect, then y'all have a tax sale and sell off stuff, so I don't know what, what are our options legally for monies that are owed to us from other entities? Do we have a capability of, of putting some liens or something on folks?
So, Madam Chair, I'd, I'd like to go through the process of at least sending them a bill and seeing what a response would be first.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you so much for the presentation. Did you have some final?
I had, I had a, a comment and a question, basically. So I know that we're not looking to set the millage rate today, but Ms. Campbell presented you with four options, and so staff needs a direction to, we need to know a direction you want us to go, because as we prepare for the second millage rate hearing, that, which is on that same day we adopt the millage rate, we want to know along which lines or that we should be looking toward.
So what I would say is to meet with the Commissioners individually between now and the next meeting and answer any questions or concerns that they may have, and then do your poll and see which direction that you think that we may be headed from once you have those one-on-one meetings with the Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is there anything else?
The County Manager had a comment.
The individuals signed up for public comment, because this is a public hearing, we still have to open the floor for anyone that's in the audience that wants to provide comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, is, anyone wanna come for?
Anyone that wants to provide comments as it pertains to the budget.
Okay. What she said.
And just as a point of clarification, I think Mr. Smith meant the second budget hearing, not millage rate hearing. So just for clarification, the meeting that's scheduled is for the budget, not the millage.
Right, 'cause we don't do millage until July.
That's the Tax Commissioner.
Correct.
And so during that May 29 meeting at 6:30, that's where, where we will be asking the Board to vote, to adopt the budget.
Correct.
We know what you meant, Dave.
Exactly.
And Madam Chair, we'll just let the record reflect that there were no public comments for the first hearing.
Okay. I did, so...
Do have a question about a public hearing. Why are we asking people to sign up the day before if this is a public hearing? Can they not show up on the next budget and speak the day of?
So...
Like we do all other public hearings?
So the individuals that signed up, signed up for public comments. And so public comments and the public hearing are two different things. They just happened to sign up for public comments on an agenda item, but they had the ability to show up for this meeting without signing up for public comments, because it's a public hearing. So yes, they can do it.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9 meeting. Okay, I'm sorry. No, we're going to executive session, so we've got some other things to do first. You might wanna wait. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the April 9 minutes.
Move to approve the minutes for April 9.
Okay, can I get a second? All in favor. Motion carries. Okay.
Executive session. Executive session.
Do you wanna do executive session first, or do we want to?
I think you can go ahead and do all the business items, so that when you all come back from executive session.
Okay, all right, then, Commissioner Anglin, you had a proposal.
Yeah, I have a motion that I'd like to read, as I'm reading it, it's a call from the House, I think it'll come up. I'd like to call for a moratorium on rezonings, comprehensive land plan amendments, lot modifications greater than five acres of area, and residential development applications in the North Ola area for the map shown on the overhead, and the staff provided Excel sheets of the partials within this said area. This is not to stop a private property owner from building a single-family residence or accessory structures, but to reject all applications for mass development such as subdivisions or commercial complexes in this area until the North Ola master plan has been devised by staff and consultants.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, citizens of Henry County. So as Commissioner Anglin stated, he wants to call for a vote for a moratorium to consider a moratorium on the North Ola area, and I'll show the map shortly, but this is to include rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, lot modifications greater than five, total acres of area, and residential development applications for not to exceed 12 months. So again, this doesn't prohibit a private property owner from building a single-family residence, conducting a business if they are on RA property, or having accessory structures, but this is intended to tackle mass development such as subdivisions or commercial complexes until a master plan can be developed and devised by staff and consultants. Staff has solicited quotes from various consultants on this matter, and we do have a consultant picked out, but I cannot name them right now. This is the area in question. So this is Highway 20 East, Turner Church Road, and kinda East Lake, this strange triangle on the far eastern portion of the county, and there are about 403 parcels that are affected by this, but essentially, we're getting a lot of requests for this area as far as zoning map changes, to do, you know, development such as subdivisions. I think the Commissioner wants to stop this area from being piecemealed and, and create a master plan that we can follow for the next 10 or 20 years to guide development in this area. In the past, a lot of Henry County has been piecemealed, and this will give us an opportunity to do some smart growth. We are growing as a county, but this gives us a chance to sit down with a consultant, flesh out a master plan for architecture, for streetscape standards, for commercial development, and this gives us a chance to pause any applications coming in so that we can develop that plan and hold developers to that plan when it is developed. So that is the purpose of this moratorium, and a lot of this property is, it's a lot of like 300, 400 acre properties that can be piecemealed and split up. Luckily, the comp plan that we adopted does give us some protection, and it does allow flexibility to where if these areas are master planned, we can support it, but we want to get that master plan in place for all of this property. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
There any questions from the Board?
No, but I got a statement. I appreciate his request in District 3. I can appreciate because I've only approved 325 homes in seven years in District 1, and this is a better way to, to help you control that growth than over in District 3.
Okay, so got a motion, is there a second?
I do.
Okay, I'm sorry, you got a...
So my, my only question is about the consultants and the use of consultants, and how much they would cost, because we're, I respect the will of what this is trying to do, I respect that, but we are singling out a district, and so I would like to know, like, what type of proposal we're talking about as far as how much this is gonna cost.
So the proposals that we've gotten have been around $50,000.
Did we, did we not do a proposal for Jonesboro Road? Did we do, or did we, did, did we, or did we not?
We did, but I was able to handle it in-house, and I can share that information with you as well.
Okay, so you were able to handle that in-house, 'cause I remember a specific proposal for Jonesboro Road, the entire corridor.
Yes, ma'am. So I, I think there was a little confusion about what that proposal was, but one of our consultants that we work with often in the county, they were able to give us something that I think would have satisfied the Commissioner at the time that asked for it. We just haven't had the opportunity to present it yet, but I will share it with you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I think that we need to share it with the new district commissioner, because I think that, that there were some concerns about the development along the Jonesboro Road corridor.
Yeah, and, and that, that project specifically, I think the Commissioner at the time, which was District 4, before Commissioner Price, she really wanted a visual of what Jonesboro Road could be after being completely built out with all the projects that are longer now, and I, I do have that, and I'm happy to share that with all of the Commissioners.
Okay, all right, then, let's set up a time for Commissioner Price and I to take a look at that particular proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other comments? So you got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I need a, need a motion now for us to, is that all the business on the, on the calendar? Okay, so I need a, a motion for us to move into executive session for personnel and litigation matters.
I move that we go into executive session for personnel and litigation matters.
Can I get a second? Motion and second, all in favor. The Board will move into executive session and then we will return. The board will move into executive session, and then we will return.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the affidavit for our executive session.
Move to approve the affidavit for the executive session.
Second.
All in favor. Upcoming meetings, notice of change of date May 21st, 2024, the regular scheduled board meeting has been rescheduled to Wednesday, May 29th at 6:30 p.m. Our... There is also a change to the budget meeting that will take place on Thursday, May 30th at 5:30 p.m. That will be a special call meeting to have the budget and public hearing for that meeting and then June 11th, 2024, 9 a.m. is a regular scheduled BLC meeting. And that's it. Motion to adjourn.